May I make the pledge of allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Pavoni, Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Mr. McGurven?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I'd like to excuse the absent council member.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman that council excuse Council President Pavoni. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So, to start off this evening, we have a couple of proclamations.
Okay, the first proclamation is regarding diaper need awareness week. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three monthers, mothers, experience diaper need at some point, at some time, while their children are less than three years of age, and forty-eight percent of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of at least fifty diaper changes per week over three years. And whereas there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provisions of diapers, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as six percent of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary, which can cause economic hardship for families. And whereas the supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infants and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas the city of Renton recognizes the importance of distributing diapers through various channels to help provide economic stability for families. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-fifth through October first, 2017, to be diaper need awareness week in the City of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in the City of Renton. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this twenty-fifth day of September 2017. And this is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is Tracy Burry here from East Side Baby Corner? Okay, we'll just make sure we get that to her.
Okay, the second proclamation is regarding fire prevention week. Whereas in nineteen twenty, President Woodrow Wilson declared Fire Prevention Day, and in nineteen twenty-two, the day became the week containing October ninth, in special observance of the Great Chicago Fire of eighteen seventy-one. And whereas US fire departments responded to three hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred home fires resulting in two thousand five hundred and sixty civilian deaths in twenty fifteen. And whereas newer homes are built with materials that burn faster than older homes, with today's furnishing producing toxic gases and smoke when burned. And whereas these conditions contribute to a small window of time to escape a fire, with people having as little as one to two minutes from the time the smoke alarms sound. And whereas a fire escape plan provides the know-how to quickly and safely escape a fire. And whereas a fire escape plan includes two exits from every room, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside. And whereas fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the home and practiced twice a year, ensuring that everyone knows what to do in a real fire situation. And whereas Renton's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires and fire injuries through prevention and education. And whereas the 2017 prior, Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," serves the, to educate the public about the importance of developing a fire escape plan. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim October eighth through fourteenth, 2017, to be Fire Prevention Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this twenty-fifth day of September 2017, and it is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're in the presence tonight of our Deputy Fire Chief Roy Gonzalez, and also our Fire Marshal Angela St. John to receive this proclamation. Come on up, Angela.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. If I can just have a couple of minutes, real quick?
Absolutely.
So, thanks for reading that proclamation. Every second does count, that's why we work so hard on our response times and getting out of the bay quickly. And so the theme is, every, every second does count. So we just want to remind our citizens to do their house plan, to do their evacuation plan, to have a couple of ways to get out of their house, which makes it quickly. Another part of our plan, of the plan this year is also for everybody to mark their addresses, whether it be on their street or on their house. Sometimes it's very difficult, even though you know where you're going, to find the exact house, if they can mark their houses. And to practice your plan at least twice a year. And make sure your kids can get out on their own. It's, as adults and children of my own, now that they're older, but still have children, you know, you want to help them out, but you need to help them by making sure they can get out on their, on their own. And then lastly, one of the old things we always talk about is test your smoke, test your smoke detector, so continue to do that also. And then for Fire Prevention Week, we're teaming up with Vince's Italian Restaurant up in the Highlands, and so on October fourteenth, from one to four, we're doing a safety event there. We'll have on-duty crews, off-duty crews, providing some pizza for some of the things that's, and you'll sign up on our Facebook page, so we encourage citizens to come and visit us there and learn more about fire safety. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Roy. Angela, did you have anything you wanted to add?
The only thing I would add is we have some plastic fire hats at the back. If anybody has children, please grab one.
I think.
I'd like to make those available.
I think the Martinez will probably have some.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to a public hearing on annexation, Angie Mathias.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Angie Mathias, for the record. I'm here to do a presentation for the public hearing for the Eric Wrestler II annexation. So, we show, I'll show the slide about the annexation process, and you can see that we've checked off a lot of the steps in this annexation process. The petitioner has submitted a sixty percent petition, representing sixty percent of the assessed value of the annexation area. That petition has been certified as valid by King County, and now we're here before you, holding a public hearing. So the purpose is to see whether you all want to accept or reject the annexation. If you accept it, you can accept all of the annex, all of the annexation area or just a portion, but that is at your discretion. Annexation area is in the East Plateau Community Planning Area, and you can see that it's just these two small, this small parcel and this larger parcel. It's about four point three acres in size. The uses are all single-family. The boundaries are all parcel lines, however, the east parcel line is near one hundred and sixty-fourth Avenue Southeast. The south parcel line is near southeast one hundred and thirty-fourth, and the west is in proximity of one hundred and sixty-second Avenue Southeast. So you can see an aerial of it, lots of just big open land and a couple of houses. Existing conditions, there's no regulated slopes in this annexation area. There are some that are, get close to forty percent, but we don't regulate slopes until they get to forty percent. That's when they're considered protected or critical area. We always look at streams and wetlands. There are, there's a wetland that is approximately eight hundred feet to the north of the part of the area, and then there's a couple of smaller wetlands that are south and southwest of the annexation area, and there are no streams in proximity. Public services, Renton Fire Authority currently serves the area, and that would not change with annexation. Water District ninety and Renton Sewer provide the water utilities to the area, and that would not change upon annexation, and it's within the Renton School District. The county currently has the par, the parcels zone R four, and our land use designation is urban residential medium, which allows for a range between four and twelve dwelling units per acre, but they've zoned it R four. In two thousand and seven, we pre-zoned this area prior to the East Renton Plateau annexation vote, and it has been pre-zoned R four. That would become effective upon annexation, so we don't have to do a separate zoning process with this annexation area. We always look at our comprehensive plan policies regarding annexation. They call, ask that we promote annexation where and when it's in our best interests, that we support annexations that are, where infrastructure and services allow for urban densities. And then we also consider all the fiscal impacts of the proposed annexations, and we will do that. Boundary review board criteria, the next step in this process, if you all approve the annexation, is to submit the, a notice of intent packet to the boundary review board, and they would review the annexation and see if it complies with their adopted policies and criteria. They ask that the, that the annexations use physical boundaries. Parcel lines are deemed to be considered physical boundaries, prevent abnormally regular, irregular boundaries. This is a rectangle, so that's pretty regular. And that we create or preserve logical service areas. All the survey areas in this instance are previously agreed to and would be unchanged, and that the annexation is an uncorporate area to a city that is urban, and Renton is an urban city. Fiscal analysis, current conditions, there are two dwellings with an estimated six residents. Future conditions, if the area were to fully build out with new development, we assumed that there would be an estimated additional ten dwelling units with an estimated additional twenty-eight residents. Costs increase at three point three percent annually, with revenue increasing at only two point five percent, and limited to sales, utility, taxes, and franchise fees. So to the operating fund, current revenues, existing would be about twenty-eight hundred dollars, with costs at about eighteen hundred dollars. At year ten, if that were to fully build out with an additional ten dwelling units, revenues would be approximately nineteen thousand dollars, and costs at about seventeen thousand. Capital enterprise funds, revenues currently about eight hundred and fifty, with costs about three hundred and fifty, and revenues at year ten at about four thousand dollars, with costs at about thirty-one hundred dollars. We always circulate to different departments for them to review and ask if there's any concerns that they have. There were no concerns expressed, and additionally, they all indicated that it is a logical extension of the services that they already provide. In conclusion, the annexation is in the best interest and general welfare of the city. It's a logical extension of our services, consistent with our annexation policies, and consistent with boundary review board criteria. The recommendation is that council accept the sixty percent direct petition to annex and authorize the administration to forward the notice of intent to the boundary review board.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Any question from council? Any correspondents?
No, there's not.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We do have one person signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium and give your name, city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes, and Donald Helm.
I was wondering, uh, hold on.
Just, just your name and city of residence for the record.
Say it again, please, I don't hear it very well.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need your name and city of residence for the record.
Donald Helm, I live in Renton.
Okay.
And what I was concerned about is being forced to hook onto sewers, where we've been septic tank for forty-seven years of living there, and I, that was my concern about if there was gonna, if we were gonna be forced to.
So I, so I can answer that question? No, you will not be. You will have access to sewers if it's in the general vicinity of your home, should the day come where your septic system fails and you need an alternative, but you would not be forced to hook up the sewer.
Okay, that, that was my main concern, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there anybody else who wanted to testify in this public hearing?
Oh, you've got one.
Hi, my name's Dennis Bailey, I live in the neighborhood, along with Donald Helm. There's been a lot.
I'm sorry, would you mind spelling your last name, since we don't have it written down?
Sure, Bailey, B-A-I-L-E-Y.
Okay, thank you.
There's been a lot of progress in the neighborhood, they've taken away a lot of the forest lands and stuff that were there, that a lot of the natural habitat have found to be home for a great number of years, long before I ever moved there. They continue to do this, and doing this as well, it's also increased the crime rate in our neighborhood. We're all getting to be a little bit concerned. Some of these people that are living in these houses and been in the neighborhood forty or fifty years, great, okay? Everything increases our property values, which increases our property taxes. A lot of these people are retired, living on fixed incomes, can't afford these increases. These guys come in and they develop this property, they pad their pockets, they pack up their tents and leave, and we get, we got to deal with the aftermath. There's a lot of deer that used to be in the neighborhood, which has shrunk, owls, eagles, a lot of natural habitat. These guys keep taking away all of this land, they got no place to go. You know, it's, I don't think it's right that these guys come in and, and build all these houses and sell them, increase our property taxes. I had, I watched this happen in West Seattle, I was a resident there for forty-five years. I couldn't afford to live in my own house. I sold it and moved out here, because consequently, it was a lot cheaper. It's doing the same things what happened to me in West Seattle is happening now in Renton. I've he, I've been here for twelve years. I'm sixty-two years old, I'm really not looking forward to moving, and eventually, that's what's gonna happen, as well as a lot of these retired folks that have spent forty years in their houses up there. This is all done for one thing, these guys want to annex this property into the, to the current plot that's there, so they can come in and build forty-eight houses, fifty houses, whatever. The neighborhood really can't take it. They've already done that a few times in the neighborhood. You know, our roads aren't designed for that, the neighborhood's not designed for that. You know, somebody help us out here as residents, don't let this happen. They're doing it for one purpose and one purpose only, so they can develop it and overcrowd the neighborhood like they're already starting to do anyway, everywhere in Renton. You all been here a number of years, sitting on the board, you've seen it, you've seen all the development that's been here in the Highlands. When I moved up here twelve years ago, you know, people used to think I lived in the boonies, and it's really not that far from every, you know, West Seattle and downtown and everything, but it has changed a lot. You know, coming out here tonight, you gotta sit at a side street on southeast one-twenty-eighth for ten, fifteen minutes in the morning to get out, so you can go to work. I mean, these roads just don't take it, you know? Help us out here, don't let this happen.
Well, I'll just, I'll just mention one thing, and I understand, a lot of people are frustrated when they see development going on in their neighborhoods, and the bottom line is, there were probably people frustrated when your house went in, when that used to be an area where they used to hunt deer and whatever the case may be. It's private property, and the unfortunate reality when you're close to a major metropolitan area like Seattle, people do want to sell their property at some point in time, and they do have property, property rights to develop. What we try to do in the city is control how much development is going to be there, so that we can mitigate the impacts, the ones that you're talking about. But there's no question, more people, more cars, it is, it is a reality that is hard to avoid. On that parcel, I think, Angie, you said ten additional homes would be built there, so there won't be forty-eight homes there, but nonetheless, that's ten more than are there today, that could potentially be there, so. Well, I understand your frustration, but there's only so much the city can do when it comes to people's personal, private property rights.
So, it's okay for the, I understand that this is all being brought forth to you folks this evening by the developer, not by the homeowner. Why isn't the homeowner doing this?
It's the property owners, it's not the developer.
Oh, okay, 'cause, well then, we've got misinformed, 'cause it's.
Thanks for nothing.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
You've got one.
You got somebody, oh, please come forward.
Good evening, my name's Karen, C-A-R-E-N, last name's Smith, that's self-explanatory. Um, I live, my property butts up against this property. I'm one of the few little parcels going the other direction. My concern is with these developments out there, we don't have streets. The street that supposedly, street that goes down towards this property to get to this property is an alley, with homes on one side, and of course, there's a field on the other side, but it's just an alley. People have one-car garages, if they have two cars, they park on the alley. There's a lot of children in these neighborhoods, I'm concerned about the safety. We don't have parks and sidewalks, we're not downtown Renton, it's all rural. Where do the kids play? Hmm, in the streets, unfortunately. I'm also concerned about one-sixty-second. Do they plan on putting one-sixty-second through? Does anybody know? 'Cause that's a main, would be a main street coming from southeast one-twenty-eighth, or fourth, as you guys know it, to this property. And I was just curious whether or not that was proposed to go through.
Nothing is proposed, at least right now, but you certainly would be welcome to share your concerns and have any input, once somebody comes in with a proposal to actually develop the land. And we welcome residential input and concerns to be, and that's part of what the city will do. They will not only answer that question, but they will look at, what are the impacts gonna be? How do those need to be mitigated?
If you guys ever drive out there, you'll see, it's one car down the road, that's it.
Right.
So, one-sixtieth put roundabouts in to help ease the traffic, and made it wider, so that works a little bit, but it's gonna be a disaster, I'm afraid. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there anybody else who wanted to testify during this public hearing? Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. What's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we accept a sixty percent direct petition to annex and authorize the administration to forward the notice of intent to the boundary review board.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McGurven, that council accept the sixty percent direct petition to annex. Any discussion or questions?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of reiterate your comment that this isn't permission to develop, this is annexation to the city, and I presume a development proposal would probably be forthcoming, but I'd encourage any neighbors that have concerns to really understand that, that development timeline, if a development's puts forward, is put forward, and then to bring these concerns up. And I also understand, if I understood the presentation correctly, that the, the basic density is the same in the county as it is in the city, if I.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, that's all, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Angie. Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, wanted to mention a couple of things. First, a big thank you to members of the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, and to our own Community Services Department, and to the public, who participated this last weekend in the Second Annual Multicultural Fair. We had a great time, wonderful performances, uh, some were pretty amazing, actually. On Friday night in particular, a lot of youth participated. On Saturday, we had the same youth and adults, and it was a wonderful, wonderful chance to view some of the great cultural traditions that are now right here in the City of Renton. Tomorrow is our last farmer's market, three to seven PM, so take advantage of that, down at the piazza. We want to also invite members of the public to participate with city leaders and community leaders, this Thursday, from three to four-thirty PM, we're gonna do our second unity march and rally. We'll start at the piazza, and around three o'clock-ish, and then we'll march and come back around to the piazza about four-thirty. Our theme this year is "We Are Stronger Together," so we hope folks will come and join us. This, later that day, on Thursday the twenty-eighth, we're again reminding folks, we have our Bicycle and Trails Master Plan Open House from five to eight PM at the Renton Community Center. And then this Saturday, we are having, again, our, it turned out to be our annual document shredding event, that is right here at Sam's Club next door. That is from nine AM, it's, we post it from nine AM to twelve PM, but it's until the truck is full. So if you've got neighbors who have a lot of stuff, need to come in early, so I would try to get here earlier rather than later on this Saturday, but it's, it's wonderful, take out some of the major paper clips and other things, but they'll, they'll take care of, of your documents. For more information, you can get on our website and just type in shred-a-thon, and they'll give you more information. Finally, again, a reminder to our, that we have our Clean Suite program this year, that's different from other years, where if you, you have the opportunity to schedule a week that is convenient for you on your regular collection day, between now and December twenty-ninth, go pick up additional materials at no charge. So if you've, to get a, schedule your date, you just need to call Republic Services at two oh six triple seven six four four zero. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Covington. Uh, nobody's signed up for audience comments, so moving on to consent agenda, we have three items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like polled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I'd like to poll item C.
Second.
Okay, we don't need a motion for that, but if you want a motion for accepting the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince.
I move we adopt consent agenda minus item C.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council approve consent agenda with, minus item C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person.
Well, as everybody knows, this is one of my favorite items. People give us money, and it's to help with vouchers for low-income people at the farmer's market, and we ran out, they ran out of money, and so they got an additional grant. And what's so important about this one is we don't accept it tonight, they won't have money to give away tomorrow, so. With that, I move that the council concur in item C.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council approve item C of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Mr. Person, appreciate that. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person.
Uh.
Yes, you have three.
Yes, I do.
Okay, the first finance committee report is regarding the Renton Municipal Airport Staffing Reorganization. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Renton Municipal Airport Staffing Reorganization and authorize an increase in the airport budget of one hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars to accommodate the addition of the three new requested one-point-oh FTE positions effective January one, twenty eighteen. The anticipated increase in the Boeing Company building lease rates currently being negotiated will cover this cost. The adjusted, the adjustment to the airport budget will be included in the mid-by-year budget adjustment ordinance, and this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Uh, this is a reorganization that's been long needed, and the nice, the nice part about it is not, well, it'll make the airport more efficient, but the airport is on a, an account, that proprietary account, so they, they have to make the money, and that, that money stays in the airport to be, take care of the airport, so this is not coming out of the general fund. So with that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the second Finance Committee report is regarding the 2017 sidewalk rehabilitation and replacement and street overlay. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to transfer ten thousand dollars from the 2018 sidewalk rehabilitation budget, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the walkway program to this project to cover the estimated budget gap, to increase the project budget by twenty, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, thus the eliminating estimated budget gap, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to award the contract to the low bidder, RW Scott Construction Company, in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the third Finance Committee report is regarding, regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on September 25th, 2017. Claims vouchers 5573 through 5583, 10042, 359753 through 359755, 359758 through 359772, 359795 through 360307, and one wire transfer and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $5,093,524.46 in payroll vouchers, including 718 direct deposits and 50 payroll vouchers totaling $1,401,1247. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As anybody that's been in City Hall lately, we know we're having trouble with these 35-year-old elevators, and I just thought that it's a lot of money we're going to be spending on these elevators, but just an example of why we need to do it. Last month alone, in additional repairs to the elevators, we spent $8,025.15, and this is kind of an ongoing thing that we see monthly, so it's very important. The other thing is, last month, we spent $400,352.25 in housing prisoners at the SCORE facility. And then, on the positive side, we paid $17,352.30 to the Washington Association of Chiefs of Police for our home monitoring program. And we figured, we've run figures on this over the years, and that little $17,000 will keep, I forget how many prisoners out, but more, save us about $50,000, $60,000 or more a month. So, with that...
Thank you.
I'm done.
Ms. Witchy.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee meeting scheduled for this Thursday has been canceled, and for Council President Pavone, we've got a committee hole this coming Monday, October 2nd. We have two items on the agenda at 5:00 p.m. in the conferencing center. The downtown civic core and economic development update, and then at 6:30, we move into chambers, and we get a, hear about the 2018 Community Development Block Grant funding allocations. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Person.
No committee meetings to announce, Mr. Mayor, but in today's Seattle Times, there was an article on the new state law allowing cities to post streets at 20 miles an hour and at 35 mile an hour streets to 35 miles an hour, and I'd like to move that issue be moved to the Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that the topic of new state regulations in regards to speed limits be referred to the Transportation Committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Ms. Witchy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, October 2nd has been canceled. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just need to announce that the Utilities Committee scheduled for September 28th has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, October 2nd at 4:00 p.m., the Transportation Committee will meet in the Consul and Conference Room, and we have four items in the agenda. Renton Airport Advisory Committee appointments, Renton Getaway Center Lease Amendment, Landing Gear Works Lease Amendment, and emerging issues in transportation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince, did you announce committee of the whole for 6:30 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move the council meeting recess into executive session for approximately 20 minutes to discuss what legal counsel potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101i.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that we recess into executive session for approximately 20 minutes for litigation. I'm sorry. The council meeting will be adjourned with no action taken following this meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in recess.